There you go. Have a good meeting.
Good evening, all. Welcome to the July 18th meeting of the Citewood Zoning Board of Appeals. Follow me to order. The Citewood Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to be welcomed and respected. We ask that our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards and support, to support and respect our community. One note before we get really hot is the link on the website was broken tonight. Anybody that wants to join us can go to zoom.us and then enter the meeting ID and participant IDs. With that being said, we'll move on to our first application of John L. Harrington Trustee Harrington Family Realty Trust regarding the property located at 39 Lighthouse Road.
So, okay, yes, just for the yes, or?
Or should I base the?
Better.
It just seems.
We have, we have. So, John L. Harrington Trustee Harrington Family Realty Trust requests a special permit finding in accordance with the Citewood zoning bylaw, section 470 dot 6 F, approved into existing structure with floodplain in a finding in accordance with section 810 to C in Master of Law, Chapter 40 A, Section 6, and any other relief the board of appeals may grant to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot and to reconstruct a single-family dwelling that will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood properly located at 39 Lighthouse Road. Please introduce yourselves for the records.
This is Matthew from the Felicity and Harris.
No, Carol Reese from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors.
So, tell us about the project.
I'll do a brief intro and then hand it over to Caroline for the email. But this is a raising reconstruction residential dwelling which was built in 1920 located at 39 Lighthouse Road. The lot is not conforming as to lot area, front inch width, dwelling is non-conforming as to front and side setbacks. The project will not increase non-conformity. We are seeking the finding under Chapter 40 A, Section 6, and Section 810 to C of the Citewood zoning bylaw that the structural change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And we're also seeking special permit under Section 276 F for substantial improvement of the structure existing before 1992, which will comply with the state building code in terms of filings and rights. Will comply and will be consistent with the national insurance flood program and will not affect any of the drainage patterns in the area. With that, I will hand it over to Caroline.
Hi, good evening. The site plan is here and you have a copy. Basically, the existing footprint is in gray. The proposed is in gold trim. We are going to raise and we build the structure, removing the concrete foundations surrounding the structure, place the building on piles to make it compliant, and the first floor elevation is 16.13. Let's see what else. It will be, it will not be increasing conformity, non-conformity. The front setback will be slightly less non-conforming going from 88 to 11, or 88 to 118. The side setback that's non-conforming gets slightly less conforming. It goes from 67 to 69. The rear and right side setback are conforming. And the gross floor area will increase rear than 20%. And that, I guess, is summer.
So I would go to Bob, the record caller. The thoughts, the input.
No one seems to control. Everything you need to do for a raising reconstruction or substantial improvement in FEMA is the flood zone. You may have all these documents that you will need to get or to position strong observation footage. They may have input on the skirting that you're talking about here.
We're in that process, yeah.
Okay. No, other than that, nothing.
Anything from the board? Anybody in the audience on 39?
Mr. Morse. Yes, Gregory Morse, 167 Tac Factory. The proposed building doesn't comply with front and side yard setbacks?
It does not.
Thank you. Can you explain to us what existing front side yard setbacks are and what the proposed will be?
Sure. That, I went through that. The front step back is currently, it is 8.8 feet. We're moving it back three feet, so it'll be less non-conforming at 11.8 feet. The left side is currently 6.7 and slightly less conforming at 6.9.
Anything else from the audience? Anybody online?
Mr. Carshere, you have no hands raised virtually.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there's no other comments?
I make a motion on the first application of John L. Harrington Trustee Harrington Family Realty Trust, Lee Lee Lee, Massachusetts, request a special permit finding in accordance with the Citewood zoning bylaw, section 476 F, in a finding in accordance with section 810.2C in MGL, Chapter 40 A, Section 6, then, and/or any other reform may grant to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. To reconstruct a single-family dwelling that will not extend within the neighborhood for property located at 39 Lighthouse Road, per the plan of Merrill Engineers Land Surveyors dated June F, 2024, the fourth find that such reason rebuilt would not create any new non-conformities, the acceptance that it intensified an existing non-conformity, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Wait a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Counselors, good luck with your report.
Thank you very much. I will read the decision.
Next application. Robert and Christina Cooneyhan, 55, Common Street, Citewood. Request a special permit finding for Master of Law, Chapter 40, Section 6, and Section 810 dot 2 of the Citewood zoning bylaw to allow for the construction of an addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 55 Common Street in Citewood. If you use yourself for the records, and tell us about the record.
I don't see you for Christina at 55 Common Street.
For the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineering, more section here, representing both Christina and her husband, Robert. The property is at 55 Common Street. We're seeking special permit finding in accordance with Master of Law, Chapter 40 A, Section 6, in zoning bylaw, section 810.2. The property again at 55 Common Street is in the R3 zoning district. There were no wetlands or a floodplain on the property. The property is fully zoning compliant with respect to the lot dimensions. There's an existing home at the property that was built circa 1930. The home is approximately 1,963 square feet. There's also a separate detached garage on the property. The home itself is non-compliant with respect to the front yard setback. Front yard setback in this case is 16.4 feet, where the average along Common Street at this location is 23.6. The proposal is to construct an addition on the home. Looking at the plan on the screen here, at the bottom of the screen, you'll see an addition that is depicted by a two-car garage with living space behind it and above it. On the top side of the north side of the house, we're proposing a farmer's porch on that side. The additions to the home fully comply with all setbacks. They comply with front, rear, and side yard setbacks, but it increases gross floor area of the home. The total floor area would be 3,593 square feet. It represents an 83% increase. We turn it over to you for questions or comments.
Looks pretty straightforward. Everything fits in the box. Bob, anything from the hearing part?
Greg, is the, yeah, is the pool house on this object that you're asking if you're able to leave for or not?
So, that's the location of the existing garage. They want to take down essentially the back third of the garage and leave the front third of the garage. They're going to remodel and interior space of it and repurpose it as a pool house, but they're not going to make any exterior changes to the dimensions of it or take it down entirely. I can see that that needed to remove the existing structure.
Okay.
There you go. You're kind of just tear off a piece of it and, and you know, exactly repurpose the structure from the garage. Are you adding to the height of that, what's said for the pool house?
So the, so the, of the pool house, no.
The reason why you're here is front yard setback.
Front yard setback, which does not change at all.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the audience? There's nobody in the audience. Anybody online for 55 Common Street?
You have no hands raised virtually, Mr. Carshere.
Thank you, sir.
I make a, I make a motion on second application of Robert and Christina Cooneyhan. How would you approach this?
Cooneyhan.
Cooneyhan, 55 Common Street, requesting special permit finding for MGL, Chapter 40, Section 6, and Section 810.2 of the Citewood zoning bylaw, allowing for the construction of additions to their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with property located at 55 Common Street, per the plan of Morse Engineering dated June 19th, 2024. Fourth find that such addition does not create any new non-conformities, the acceptance that it intensified an existing non-conformity, such intensification does not, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, being none? Counselors, good luck with your problem?
Thank you. And if I might add, who needs the attorney to turn the law to something for the decision, go forward, talk to the other team.
Ooh, we're two for two.
Elizabeth, that's happened.
Thank you.
Our, the third application is a continuance from our June meeting. This is the Citewood Harvey Goff Club, 84 Jericho Road. Request a special permit in finding in accordance with Master of Law, 40 A, Section 6, section 470 dot 6 F in 810 dot 2B of the Citewood zoning bylaw and, and/or any relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow an addition to be constructed on a non-conforming structure of the pool house properly located at 84 Jericho Road. For the record, name, address, what year?
Alan Colwell, where do you want to start relating?
Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering.
Thank you. This is your third visit here. You have not changed plans. Do you have anything you need to add?
Yes, I would. So, since, since the last meeting, I know that there was question at that last meeting whether this project required variance for this federal category of finding. We spoke with our counsel Steve Gard. Gard and that Steve wouldn't be with us tonight, but he wholeheartedly agreed with us that the initial application was proper with this finding. It is not a variance application. In looking at that, we specifically looked at a couple of things. One of the things we looked at was a case called Rockwood versus Snow, which was brought up, I believe, at the last meeting. Rockwood versus Snow, if you read the entire case and not just the excerpts that are included in the Brodsky book, was about a commercial property that was waterfront property that was seeking, seeking a variance or a special permit in regard to lot coverage. They did not comply with their lot coverage requirements. They were proposing an addition and therefore they were intensifying, increasing non-conformity in that base aggravating non-conformity. That's different than what we have here. We have a non-conformity with respect to the pool house. Pool house is at 2.7 feet, front yard setback, or 30 feet would be required. We're not aggravating the 2.7 foot existing non-conformity, nor are we creating any new. So it's significantly different than the Rockwood versus Snow case. In this case, we look at the zoning bylaw, section B, 10.2C, which I just heard the board make a ruling on at 39 Lighthouse Road where a brand-new building was proposed that didn't comply with any setbacks. That was not a variance. It was just issued a special permit in accordance with 810.2C. And if I may read that section. It says specifically in it, "The repair, operation, reconstruction, essential structural change in non-conforming structure so as to increase an existing non-conformity or create a new one, including the extension of an exterior wall at or upon the same non-conforming distance within or prior to the art, shall require the issuance of variance from the previous." That language right there is very specific. What it says is that if we were proposing a setback of 2.7 feet or a setback that was what the existing is, it would require a variance. We're not proposing a setback that's close to what exists out there. We're proposing a setback that's nine feet further in compliance. It's the same relief that was just granted at 39 Lighthouse Road. 810.2C, the first paragraph or the first sentence of it is, is, "In these instances, operation, reconstruction, extension, or structural change, the applicant may petition for appeals to allow the repair, operation, reconstruction by a finding." So we are seeking that finding. We do not believe that this is a variance application. We can get into the specifics about the finding if you'd like, but if you want to talk about whether it's a variance or not, our counsel advises that it is not how we read the bylaw and how we've seen the board interpret it, not just with 39 Lighthouse Road. Looking back at, again, previous applications, one that was made by two of the sitting members here tonight and the chairman, who I recognize is not here tonight. There was one made last year, 12 Old Country Way with a similar raising rebuild. Again, was issued a finding in a case like that where a building did not comply with setbacks, but was further from the lot line than existed. It was not considered a variance database. Another one that was done, another commercial property, Allen Place, which is in East Fish Market, not by this board, but a previous, so Citewood Zoning Board. Again, issued a finding, not a variance in a case where you had a building going up that doesn't comply with setbacks, but it is more compliant than what exists at the site already. So, we believe we're in a special term category. We can go through the criteria for that if you would like.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this. Are you going for a special permit or a finding? Because obviously the vote is very different.
Yes. So, we're looking for a finding. How 810.2C is written, it says that it's Zoning Board of Appeals, like a finding, a special permit.
The practice, as you like to, historically, for this board, on a finding and specifically, it is a finding slash special permit. So, you require a special permit to go through the process of getting the permit to do this.
I would like to ask the board.
So, I'm going to just read the excerpts from the Brodsky, because I think it says everything it needs to say. It says that Rockwood does contemplate a two-step approach. First change is examined to determine the compliance with the ordinance of the bylaw. If all aspects of the proposed change are in conformance with the bylaw, if we're not, declaring a special permit may be issued, as discussed through S. Byadman. On the other hand, if the proposed change adds a new non-conformity or that aggravates an existing non-conformity, requires a variance. You're aggravating a non-conformity. You're building within a setback.
We, that's where we disagree, because in this case here.
I think you're building, you're requiring a 30-foot setback.
In this case here, the case that was applied, Rockwood versus Snow, it was a lot covered.
It was a lot. We don't have a lot.
We don't, we don't have a lot. No. And so any addition that they add to that property is obviously intensifying the non-conformity. There's a third scenario other than creating any non-conformity or intensifying one, and that is whether we aggravate the existing non-conformity. We're not aggravated. We're not violating the existing buildings at 2.7. You can say we're intensifying the non-conformity because we're adding area within the front yard setback, but we're not violating the 2.7 that exists. And that's why when you look at section 810 point, 810.2C specifically has that language about putting in an addition that's further back from the lot line than what the existing setback is. If I was coming in with it at 2.7, I agree a variance would be required because the bylaw says, but it's jogged back, which is what is allowed in the pilot.
I don't see it that way. I see that any construction within the setback is aggravating. The, the non-conformity is that you're within a setback. Not that you're 2.7 feet or 90, that you're within the 30 and you're aggravated by adding more. I'll go further. In that, the definition of addition, and I am going back to this, is so vague that it allows for interpretation. And I don't interpret that as an addition. I think you are, personally, I think you're creating a new non-conformity. So, I think the, the crux of it is that our, our interpretation of this is that you're extending the non, the extension of the non-conforming has been settled that it requires a variance. If you're not within the lines, it requires variance. I, I understand what you're going to say. I don't, I don't know where you're going with this.
I would like to ask for a simple explanation. What is the difference that was just granted at 39 Lighthouse Road? You have a building that's brand-new that doesn't comply with setbacks versus this building here. What is the difference? We're asking the same relief. We're further from the lot line, just as they were further from the lot line. It's the same scenario. In our bylaws, silent.
They're tearing down a house and building and rebuilding within the footprint and improving what they have. You're asking to, to add on to an already bad situation.
Which our bylaw specifically allows, just like it allows for raising, rebuilding by a finding. And we, the finding can be made and we can discuss the finding, but it clearly it's not a variance. Otherwise, you would have required a variance for the 39 Lighthouse.
No, it doesn't require variance at 39 Lighthouse because of the raisin reconstruction. They're not extending their, tearing down a building within the same footprint. I think it was, it was very clear, you know, in the raisin recon. The damage dealt.
Language in the bylaw is for any reconstruction, extension, or structural change. That can be a raising, rebuild, or that can be an addition. It has always been interpreted as an addition following under section 810.2C, which has always been a finding. It's never been a variance. You voted on that over at Old, Old Country Way just last year to issue the same relief.
This is not, it all comes together.
No, it's not. It's a lot of, but it's the same.
At 84, at 84 Jericho Road.
Is there a problem with the address, sir?
No, but it's the address that we're talking about. We're not talking about these other projects. We're talking about this specific property, this specific address with this specific set of conditions. In my opinion, it requires a variance. At the very least, I find that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So that we can be better prepared when we come back. Can we get some explanations of what is detrimental to the neighborhood in your opinion, so that we can address them at the next meeting?
It is more detrimental to the neighborhood, in my opinion, because that, I believe that property is overdeveloped. And then adding to the, adding to the, how do I say that? The, the visual noise that's at that, at that lot would be detrimental to the area. I don't think.
In discussing overdevelopment, there is no lot coverage. There was no impervious coverage requirement of building coverage.
That's why substantial, substantial, substantial more detrimental is in the opinion of the board, not based on any criteria other than our opinion. I have not found anything that says anything other than that. So because we allow it somewhere else, doesn't mean it has to be allowed here. There are alternatives that you can do that would be in full compliance. You know, you can put the, the addition or whatever you want to call them on the other side. You can put a second floor on the pool house. You know? There are alternatives.
We're requesting continuance to the August meeting. Would it be beneficial to come with a couple of elevations as well? So when we actually, should we make it to the second part of the discussion? I think visually seeing roof lines tying in and faces and so, I think it's going to, on that end of it, show well for your argument. I would recommend having some, one, two, you know, one or two elevations.
Elizabeth, what's the date in August? I think it's this, the.
15, that's the next week, yeah, 20, 22nd, right?
I think it's the 15th, that's.
Is this the 15th? Is that the 3rd?
15, yeah.
Okay, I think it's 15.
Versus Thursday.
Ah, all right. Thank you.
I motion to continue to August 15th at seven p.m. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the.
I'll take it. I'll take it. Thank you. Elizabeth, the end of meeting, Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven, yeah, important.
Oh, 122.
You came in first?
I came in first, by, by two minutes after 635 miles. It was close.
It was for you. That's awesome. How recent was that?
Two weeks, two, three weeks ago.
How many days did that take?
About three. Started on a Friday afternoon.
A face or team or the crew or whoever.
Forty foot sailboat had a crew of nine.
Wow.
So, three votes went down this year.
Yeah.
Total losses.
Really? I would see it overall.
Six to 10.
The whole way?
Not the whole way, but in areas through the Gulf Stream.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wow. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd love to see fear and happy lines.
Is there any other meeting that's, we have minutes to go.
Yes, minutes in December 21st, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the meeting that's December 2023.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And June 20, 2024.
I make the motion to approve the minute of, of the June 20, 24 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business, Elizabeth?
No, that'll do it for this evening. In adjourned and then I just like will have to keep you.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second. In favor?
Aye.